Good evening, welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, October 18th, 2022. Ms. Tilbrick, what you please call roll.
Councilman Delgarza?
I am present.
Councilwoman Solis?
Here.
Councilwoman Crocker?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Young?
Here.
Councilman Loughran?
Here.
Mayor Bucknight?
Here. And if y'all will please rise for the pledges, followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the city, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. All right, again, welcome, everybody. Mr. Garza, do you have any announcements and or reminders?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We do have several announcements for you this evening. I have a few, and then I'm gonna ask a couple of staff to come up and provide some updates as well. On behalf of the Police and Fire Department, I want to remind the public that on Wednesday, October 19th, VPD and VFD luncheon learn from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Community Center is taking place. Tex dot will be our guest speaker. On Friday, October 21st, the Victoria Police Department's Midnight Basketball from 7:30 to 9:30 p.m. at Victoria Youth Sports Complex located at 107 North Ben Wilson. We'll have food, beverages, and free basketball for the first 60 participants. And people will get an opportunity to break the city manager's ankle. The Housing Finance Corporation would like to remind the public that on Tuesday, October 25th, is the Enchanted Gardens Ribbon Cutting and Open House at 10:00 a.m., located at 4601 North Ben Jordan. Couple of other announcements, and to help me out, I'm gonna ask Daryl to come up and provide an update from his group.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just wanted to give a brief invitation out to council. Next Thursday, October 27th, at 9:00 a.m., we'll be doing a green ribbon ribbon cutting. Say that fast 10 times. Tex dot, we'll have some representatives there, as well as our contractors. This is the Green Ribbon Project and grant that we did in conjunction with Tex dot out at Loop 463 at Navarro and John Stockbauer. And so we'll have some light refreshments and some seating set up. The mayor has graciously accepted to make, say a few words, and we will have it set up where you can park kind of right there, just kind of jump the curb, or you can park it and walk across the street. We'll have an officer there to help if need be. But it'll last, you know, 30, 45 minutes tops. If you'd like to take a tour of all the beds, we'll have people there to explain to you what's what and hope to have a good turnout.
Thank you, sir. Tiffany will provide an announcement for Municipal Court.
We got a lot going on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to remind the public that Municipal Court will be at Christ Kitchen tomorrow from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. to assist anybody with outstanding warrants or past due tickets from the Municipal Court. We've been hosting the outreach dockets monthly since April. Each month, we choose a different location. Sometimes we go back to the same ones. And then next Monday, we will have an evening court docket virtually through Zoom at 5:30 p.m. And on the 31st, we will have another open docket, and that one's virtual through Zoom at 1:00 p.m. That is a monthly effort. The virtual one is held every month as well, but the evening one we do about quarterly. So I just wanted to remind the public about those three upcoming court dockets. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toda.
And lastly, Ashley will provide an update on Citizens Academy.
All right, well, good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Save the best for last. So I'm not sure if you saw the news release, but our Citizens Academy applications are now open. So residents have until November 16th to apply, and we truly encourage residents to get involved, especially if you want to get involved in your community. You can serve on your local boards and commissions, and this is one extraordinary way to get involved. So also, on Friday, we're launching our Citizens Academy Alumni Group with a luncheon. Jesus is gonna be giving a presentation, so we're super excited about that. Lots to come. Please apply. You can do so online at victoriatx.gov/citizensacademy, or you can call our office at 485-3110. We'll be happy to help.
Thank you.
Does she do public information? Because she's really good. We should have her.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's almost like this is her profession, right? Thank you, Ashley.
It is, for anybody that didn't know that.
Those are all the announcements that we have.
Okay, great. Let's go into public and employee recognition. We have three on the list. Do you have any other ones?
No.
I have one at the end.
All right.
Item B2A is the 4H Week Proclamation. Whereas the City of Victoria is proud to honor the 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension Service for 115 years of providing experience-based education to youngsters throughout the Lone Star State. And whereas the admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members to our society. And whereas it's more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participants ranging in age from 8 to 19, help from diverse ethnic and social and economic backgrounds, and truly represent a cross-section of the state. And whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today were it not for the service of its more than 22,000 volunteers who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. And whereas throughout its proud history, the 4H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans, and through its innovative and inspiring programs continues to build character and to instill the values that have made our state strong and great. Now, therefore, I, Jeff Bucknight, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do officially declare October 2nd through 8th, 2022, to be National 4H Week in Victoria, Texas, and commend the 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&amp;M Agrolife Extension Services and the many men and women who have made the program a success.
Thank you all. That was very deep. Thanks.
Thank y'all for allowing us to come out tonight. National 4H Week is always the first full week in October. National 4H Week holds a special place in my heart, so does 4H. It has helped me with my public speaking, because if I was not in 4H, I'm gonna tell y'all now, I would not be up here talking. So 4H has given me a lot, and I know it's given a lot to Trapper and Levi and Peyton as well. So thank y'all so much for having us tonight.
Congrats again, y'all. Thank you.
Great job.
And a big thank you for the goodies y'all brought us tonight as well. We always look forward to those.
Item B2B is the Friends of the Library Week Proclamation. Whereas Friends of the Victoria Public Library raise funds that enable our Victoria Public Library to move from good to great, providing the resources for no-charge programming, support for children's summer reading, and special events throughout the year. Whereas the work of the Friends highlights on, an ongoing basis, the fact that our library is a cornerstone of the community, providing opportunities for all to engage in the joy of lifelong learning and connect with the thoughts and ideas of others from ages past to present. Whereas the Friends understand the critical importance of well-funded libraries and advocate to ensure that our library gets the resources it needs to provide a wide variety of services, including expert assistance in research and readers' advisory. Whereas the 51 years, the commitment of the Friends of the Victoria Public Library has set an example for all on how volunteerism leads to positive civic engagement and the betterment of our community. Now, therefore, I, Jeff Bucknight, Mayor of the City of Victoria, Texas, do proclaim October 16th through 22nd, 2022, to be Friends of the Library Week in Victoria, Texas, and urge everyone to join the Friends of the Library and thank them for all they do to enhance our Victoria Public Library and community quality of life.
And I forgot to sign it.
My name is Diana Sneed, and I'm the president of the Friends this year. I just wanted to say that we're very excited to be celebrating the Friends of the Library Week this week. We're gonna have a pop-up appreciation for our Friends and volunteers on Thursday from 4 to 6 at the library, and would love to see all of you there. So come on by and enjoy a cookie and help us thank our volunteers. This past year, we were able to raise $18,208.20 that we donated to the library. So we were very happy that they'll be able to use that to continue those free programming that they have been able to offer over the years, like the gingerbread event at Christmas or the summer reading program. So, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Item B2C is a presentation of plaques to outgoing Board and Commission members. So the council would like to recognize Stephen Ford, Mr. Ford, if you'll please come, for his service on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Mr. Ford has served on the board since 2020. Mr. Ford, the city appreciates your willingness to serve your community and presents you the plaque and appreciation of your time and service. The next plaque we would like to present from council is to recognize Barbara David for her service on the Library Advisory Board. Ms. David was served on the board since 2021. She, the city appreciates your willingness to serve your community and presents you with this plaque and appreciation of your time and service, ma'am.
I only had one that I wanted to recognize. A lot of city staff went into the presentation that I did last week, the State of the City address. I think that presentation setup is by far the best chamber luncheon event of the year. Not because I was speaking, but because of the work that they do behind the scenes. Keisha Smith and Derek Farrell kind of, I think, led the charge for Jesus to get together the presentation that I had envisioned, and really appreciate their support and all the department heads that they got the information to them to get put into the presentation. Thank you all. Y'all do such a great professional job. Communications group did a great job setting everything up. IT did a wonderful job too, James. Really appreciate, there's a whole bunch of effort that goes into it, and it came off without a hitch, and it looked great. Thank you. Items from council. All right, we'll close that. Citizens Communication, Ms. Barbara David.
As a prior member of the Victoria Public Library Advisory Board, I want to say that I appreciated the year that I spent on the board. It gave me the opportunity to objectively hear other people's opinions. I believe the role of the library is to provide resources for those in the community who wish to become more knowledgeable, who wish to research a particular topic, who need to use the computer, who are looking for some quiet time, or just want to read for the sake of reading. An excellent library, in my opinion, such as Victoria Public Library, provides not only the materials for those who wish to use them, but also the space to access those materials. It provides thousands of books, videos, and CDs, meeting spaces, quiet areas, as well as a wide variety of children's activities, teen programs, and adult workshops. It gives one the opportunity to learn new things and explore possibilities. It gives an opportunity for doors to be opened where they once were closed. Victoria Public Library is much more than a building. My hope for this library is that they continue to educate, encourage, and enlighten the Victoria community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. David. Again, thank you for serving. Mr. Von der Rohe. Welcome back from your hiatus.
I gave you a break.
We missed you.
Good evening, council and mayor. There's a whole bunch of people trashing out storage bins. It's at Everest Food Mark on 3300 North Ben Jordan. It's by two churches, but if you're not familiar where it is, just a tackle shop, you know, where people go fishing, and the person that owns the charity bin don't want to do anything, and the owner of the convenience store don't want to do anything. And this ain't like simple littering like a Class C misdemeanor. That's like dumping like a Class B misdemeanor, where you go to jail. And this been going on for a whole, for a long time, and this is today's picture. And also on Jack in the Box, I was gonna update what happened. They built the fence, and they still didn't want to go around, so they broke the fence down so they could cut through. Then the contractor came, because Code Enforcement caught him and fixed the fence. And they found another way to jaywalk, you know? And they go through this alley, you know, behind Charlie's Donuts and behind Jack in the Box. It's a big alley. They come from the crossroads apart. The way, reason I found it, I wasn't snooping, I was getting, they have the monster tacos on sale today at $1.50 at Jack in the Box. I wasn't snooping, and I just seen them. And it looked like someone's trying to close that up today, like build a barrier so they can't go through the alley and away. And also, thanks for the national night out with the police chief and the fire chief and putting that together. And also, thanks for Ken. He's putting in 1.5 million for roads over at Queen City and Christ Kitchen and that area. I appreciate that. And my condolences to Mr. Halapaska. And he did 15 years on the council, and he was a mayor pro temp during the 15 years. And plus, he was an excellent baker, and he done lots more, but I don't have time in three minutes, you know, because you'll be going, eh! Thanks, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Von der Rohe. Good to see you. Glad you're back. All right, that'll conclude the citizens' communication. We don't have any items with public hearings, so we will go to the consent agenda.
Item D1 is the Adoption Amendment to the Special Meeting on September 30th, 2022, and the Special Meeting on October 3rd, 2022. Item D2 is a resolution approving a contract renewals with Lawn Star Yard Care and Kevin Stewart DBA Ground Effects Landscaping LLC for the mowing of city-owned properties in the cumulative amount of $226,291. Item D3 is a resolution awarding the annual supply contract for wastewater sledge de-watering polymer to Polidine Incorporated in the amount of $61,065. Item D4 is a resolution approving the annual purchase of uniforms for the Victoria Fire Department from Galls Incorporated from buyboard contract 67022 in an estimated amount of $60,000. Item D5 is a resolution approving the First Amendment to the Containerized Commercial Solid Waste Contract with Waste Management of Texas Incorporated.
All right, thank you.
Go move.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda is read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item E1.
Item E1 is a resolution approving a master services and purchasing agreement with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for the purchase of digital recording devices, software storage, and tasers in the amount of $1,212,502. $502 cents, sorry.
Good to see you, Chief Young.
Evening, everybody, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm here today representing Chief Aradondo, requesting your approval of a master services and purchasing agreement update with Axon Enterprise. During a review of the latest technology with Axon, the opportunity presented itself, and quite happily so, to take advantage of this restructuring of Axon's discounts to rework three of the existing contracts. The contract consolidation will result in the first-year saving of $15,000, with the total reconfiguration of the contract saving $142,000 a year, or $713,000 over the life of the five-year contract. This will basically allow us to obtain the latest upgrades in digital recording devices, both body camera and in-car cameras, and software storage, and tasers in the amount of 1.2 million. As you can see on the slide, the upgrades are in the evidence.com storage, which is critical. This is where all of the digital physical evidence is stored, the body cameras, the dash camera, the digital photographs, crime scene photographs that are taken by the officers. These are all stored here, awaiting the possibility of the usage in court. The contract also includes unlimited storage of the data collected in the interview rooms. All of this, all of these upgrades, the Taser 7, as you see on the right, the Body Camera 3, the Axon Fleet 3, evidence.com, these are all upgrades over the course of the contract, and those upgrades will be free. All of this stuff is, it's all part of the buyboard contract pricing, and the contract reevaluation will equip their officers with the latest up-to-date tools that they use every day. Be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Just to be clear, we're already using body cameras, vehicle cameras, and tasers. It's just an upgrade, and we have been using those cameras for quite a while now.
Yes, sir. Been doing this for about, I believe it's eight years. This is the eighth year. Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt E1.
I second it.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Chief Young. Appreciate the presentation. E2.
Item E2 is a resolution awarding the 2023 Mill Overlay Project for John Stockbauer Drive to Brandon Paving Company LTD of Victoria, Texas, for the proposal amount of $1,206,998.05.
Good evening. Real quick presentation. Project location is John Stockbauer between Rio Grande and Colony Creek Drive. Project details, it's about 3,000 linear feet long. We're gonna do some major point repairs to the southbound outside lane, the one next to the trees. We did prepare an additive to extend it to Airline. That was an additional 2,000 linear feet. And then we also included in this project to restripe the roadway all the way from Rio Grande to Airline. The proposal details, Brandon paving was the lowest proposal at 1.2 million. Our budgeted cost is 1.5. Scheduled to start is December, and then completion August. The additive was a price amount of $2 million, and we did not recommend that. That was way over the budgeted amount that we have, but we are including the striping. So we want to at least continue the stripe, new striping all the way up. And that's all I have. If y'all have any questions, thank you.
I just have one more humorous than anything, because it won't be lost on my constituents that I live in Colony Creek, but I didn't ask you to bring it to Colony Creek and stop, correct?
Correct. You did not. You asked to carry it forward. That's why we did the additive, to see if we could get it all the way pushed forward. So we did our part, we just couldn't get the numbers to fit.
Well, thank you. Well, fixing that part by the trees will go a long way.
Oh, yes. That is the worst part.
Like to make a motion to approve item E2? Second.
All right, got a motion and a fight for second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. E3.
Item E3 is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with FGM Architects Incorporated for, Architects for Design Services and Construction Administration of the Proposed Public Safety Headquarters in the amount of $2,840,885.
All right, so we've been talking about this project for a long time. I have a few slides simply just to provide some context. As you know, there was a study that was done in 2000, or finalized in 2018 by Dewberry Architects, but the same architect, Brian Mead, who's now with FGMA. And that process yielded a recommendation to build a campus with several buildings on it, because the premise of that original study was to look at all of these facilities all around town and try and bring them into one site. And in theory, that sounds like a great idea, but unfortunately, it was a very expensive, cost-prohibitive endeavor. And so this was a recommendation that came in 2018, which, as you see, had several buildings on site and would cost twice as much as what potentially we're looking at doing now with one building. But one of the big things that was missing from that study was looking at what to do with the current building that PD is in, as well as just taking a more strategic approach at options. And so in order to do that, we commissioned an update to the study in 2021. As I mentioned, we contracted with FGMA, but the same architect, Brian Mead, who had been involved for years before then. And this was a little bit more comprehensive, looked at different departments that were included in the City Hall complex, to really just develop a more robust recommendation. Just a quick refresher, I know we've talked about this, but obviously, the space that PD has now, that was specifically designed to be for PD space, is obviously not adequate. At the time that this building was built, I think it's been said that we've had 50 positions of the Police Department, and now we have 130 sworn and 38 civilian. And we're estimated over the next 20 years to hopefully grow to 163 sworn and 65 civilian. And so obviously, we not only need adequate space for the people that we have now, but we need to account for future growth. With the Fire Department, this is specifically for the administration staff. Obviously, as our Fire Department grows, they grow at fire stations, either growing staff at existing fire stations or adding fire stations. And so this is strictly just for the administrative staff that's currently located in the building off of Airline. And you can see that this is just a slight increase for them, but obviously, there's synergy with them being located with PD. One of the new things in the 2021 study was looking at Municipal Court. court, which also needed some space, and they also envisioned growing over that twenty-year period. There was also a more robust assessment to the existing building that we're in now, which obviously includes municipal court, and specific with municipal court, and even with PD, there was a lot of safety concerns, you know, ranging from not having a secure parking lot to just the space that we're in now that doubles as municipal court, just not being adequate space for the number of folks that come through that operation. And so obviously, there was just a need to consider alternatives, and so ultimately, there was a recommendation to build a new centralized public safety headquarters that not only includes police and fire admin, but also municipal court. And you can see the drastic difference between this vision versus the one in two thousand and eighteen, mainly in that this is one large building, estimated at roughly sixty-eight thousand square feet, which as I mentioned, police, fire admin, and I forgot to mention nine-one-one dispatch would also relocate to this building, which is currently at a different site. Secured parking, as well as just space for growth. We recently purchased thirty-two acres off of Main and Airline, sort of squeezed in between Main and Vine Street. Obviously, the developable land, the developable land of that is centered on front edge of Main Street, and so we envision using roughly those ten acres, part of that fourteen acre tract that is close to that intersection. And this is an example of what that might look like, this isn't final by any means, because we still have to go through some more work, which is why we're having this action agenda item tonight. But that's where we are with it. Cost-wise, you probably recall me mentioning that the construction cost went up, construction cost when we first started this process last year was just shy of thirty million. And you may recall I mentioned at our workshop and have just mentioned in other off conversations that that construction estimate has gone up to roughly thirty-three million. Some of those other costs are, you know, cost of purchase of land, which we already did, of course, the two-point-eight million dollar contract that's on the agenda today. Some of the other elements under allowances would be things that we just budget through our normal budget process. But the construction cost currently is estimated roughly thirty-three million, which is an increase of roughly three million compared to six months ago. As a refresher, we currently in the CIP have twenty-five million dollars allocated for fiscal year twenty-four, and so we have to have that conversation about some creative ideas on how we get to that thirty-three, or whatever the number ends up being once we go through the design process. Timeline-wise, as part of the adopted budget for fiscal year twenty-three, we incorporated the two-point-eight million dollars to get started with the design, and so that's the item that's in front of you today. We envision the design process running through late spring, early summer of next year, so that hopefully that guaranteed maximum price that we would hopefully get from a construction manager at risk that we would get on board this winter could be part of the conversation when we adopt the budget for fiscal year twenty-four, so that ultimately we can bid out the project and go through that process next fall and ultimately start construction of this facility sometime in the winter of two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, and we envision total completion by the summer of two thousand twenty-five. So it's a very quick, you know, process, but I want to go back to today, right, which is the awarding of the contract with FGMA Architects, and I want to introduce you to the folks that will be involved with this process. And I mainly want to introduce Brian Mead, who's the principal architect with FGMA, and he'll introduce the folks that are with him today. And so, Brian, come on up and you'll take it from here.
Before he comes up, can I ask you a question?
Go back down.
Oh, I'm so sorry, it's just gonna be a question, oh my god. Do you foresee any mediums on Main Street?
Medians, no.
Okay, because I'm thinking about the fire trucks, okay, just so we don't have that problem, okay?
Yeah, no, great question.
I also have a question, I don't know if it's for you or the architects. Is there going to be any time set aside for the council to meet with the architects to discuss the design?
Yeah, we definitely want an inclusive process, for sure, yeah, and I can, he can touch on that when he goes through his process and scope.
And another question, can you go back a slide?
Yes.
I mean, we're allowing eight months for the design, and then there's a small lull from June to September, then three months to approve the budget for the construction, and then another four months for the bidding, and then over a year for the construction, is that normal? That seems like a long timeline. Is there any way to speed this up?
He can, he can hit on that, there's a staggering approach that they'll take to the project that's included in the scope, but I'll let him touch on that, because I think once you hear him talk about the phasing approach about bidding, it'll might make more sense how they sequentially set that up to ensure the project moves quicker and quickly.
If there's any way to speed it up, that sure would be.
Yeah, I think, I'll let him describe that sequential process, and I think that'll answer your question.
Okay.
But it's also not a small project, right, so I mean, this is a sixty-eight thousand square foot building, highly sophisticated building from a technological standpoint, so I mean, this is a large, this is a large project, I think their contract allows for almost ten thousand man-hours, I think, to go towards this project. So I mean, so this is a significant undertaking that will take time. Okay, Brian?
All right, thank you, Jesus. Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I could start right with that question if you'd like, and then I can go through this. So, City Manager Garza said, this is, this is a pretty large project, and so it's not uncommon at all to have a nine to ten month design process, regardless of what delivery method you do, because there's so many project, so many consultants involved. The site, as you know, has some topography issues, there's some regrading that's going to happen with flooding, with the intersection of Airline, there's going to be, you know, the signaling now is going to have to change with that new intersection and drive, so there's a lot of engineering involved. So, it's very much, we're going to work as efficiently as we can, but this kind of project is definitely going to take nine to ten months. Now, not to get deep into the delivery method, but at a minimum, we're going to do a delivery method that has a construction manager, someone involved, ideally at the end of the schematic design phase. So we're going to go a couple of weeks of program verification, then we're going to go eight weeks into schematic design. Ideally, at the end of that phase, you get a construction manager on board who, they are going to add very valuable pre-construction services. So they're going to be looking at supply chain issues, what are taking the longest times to order, what material costs, you know, what should the system be, should it be all steel, or is steel, joists versus beams super expensive, should we look at another method? So, they are going to add a lot of tremendous value to see if a construction schedule, which we're thinking maybe fourteen to sixteen months, if there's any way that that can be reduced a couple of months. So instead of bidding everything at once, it's very common with that construction manager to say, let's try to get a bid package one out a little bit early, which might be all your underground utilities and site work. And so if they can get the whole team, primarily the civil engineers, to fast-track and focus on that first, technically, you could get that bid, package one out and awarded, while the rest of the design team is still fishing up the rest of the building. And so that's a way to kind of compress that schedule a little bit, so we were just talking about it before tonight, that's common. And then maybe you do your superstructure next, and then possibly the third package is everything else. So they're going to add a lot of value to see if what normally might be a sixteen-month project might be able to be smartly and strategically compressed a little bit. So we're absolutely going to work to do that. So, again, very much grateful and honored to be here, it was really nice to, I think I was here in early February to do a presentation on our study before, so I'm very honored to be back in front of you again, and this time to present our team. And there's four of us that we brought with you tonight that I'd love to do a brief introduction of. Before I do that, the overall high level of our team, very complex project, but we are very excited to have a teaming arrangement with two architecture firms. So FGM Architects with our Austin studio is going to be leading this project, will be architect of record, I'll go into a little bit more detail in a second, but just the high level, we're going to be working with Raleigh McCoy Associates right here in Victoria. So I was very happy to meet them a few years back, I think two or three years ago, and so it's going to be a great collaboration working together with us, you know, in Austin, just a couple hours away, but with Raleigh McCoy right here just down the street. So that's going to be a really, really beneficial relationship for, for the project. Most of the consultants then have either worked with the city before or worked with Raleigh McCoy or our firm, so there's a lot of familiarity. So with Civil Corps, doing a lot of work as our civil engineers, R.E.M. Engineering for Structural, Cleary Zimmerman for MEP, and then Janak Landscape for Landscape, Hall Design Group, because it's a technical building with the municipal courts, with police, a lot of improved security, they'll be looking closely at the detailing for security, and then Weaver and Jacobs out of Kuro is going to provide the early cost estimating before the construction manager is brought on board. So that, that rounds out the main team, and then just quickly, the four of us that are here tonight, so myself again, Brian Mead with FGM Architects, I've been doing this now almost thirty years and have really enjoyed most of my career working with municipalities and communities like yourself. So I really thrive on this building type, most specifically, public safety, law enforcement. I've worked with agencies from Mesa, Arizona, to the city of Austin, programming all of their police departments. I was honored in two thousand nineteen to serve on the International Police Chiefs Committee to do a refresh of the police facility design guidelines. So those hadn't been updated since, I think, nineteen ninety-seven, and there was a select, I think, five of us architects around the country that were brought in by that organization to kind of revamp the standards for, for law enforcement facility design. So, very much honored to help your community lead the programming and planning of that project. With me as well, and they're all sitting in the second of the back row, but Jaime Palomo is our principal in charge out of our Austin studio. Jaime, very much like me, has over thirty years of experience working a lot with communities, and he will be the principal in charge on this project. Next, we have Billy Berger, sitting next to him, so Billy is principal with RMA Architects, and Billy also has a lot of experience, twenty-four years of experience, twenty-one of those at Raleigh McCoy. And Billy will be the principal leader on the RMA side of the project. And then last but not least, Patrick Or, also an associate architect with RMA Architects, and Patrick has twenty years of experience, ten of those at RMA, so will be a key player on the project team as well. So again, as any big project, it takes a village, we're just four of a whole number of folks that are, that are underneath us, that'll be proud to work on this project. So just one slide about each firm, as I said, we are a well-established firm, been around since nineteen forty-five. We now have eight offices, we were founded in a little town, O'Fallon, Illinois, southern Illinois, but we have three offices in Illinois. We have Austin, we just opened one in Fort Worth, Texas, so we are definitely expanding in Texas, Wisconsin, Missouri, and Virginia. And again, we have many different groups, but we take pride in our municipal group, which our staff just works on these important building types, which is including exactly your project. And then RMA, again, based right here in Victoria, Texas since nineteen ninety-five, established obviously by Raleigh McCoy himself, and again, does a lot of great projects, serves all sorts of market types, I mean, it's great to have that kind of local firm that does it all. So we are so happy to have their, their presence and the kind of support they're going to offer, just being minutes away is, is great with their staff, so we can't wait to work with them. Just a couple last slides to round it out, in case you're concerned about the numbers. We do work nationally, you know, fire and police are our biggest projects, so we definitely are, you know, cutting our teeth on this project, we've done it quite a bit. So dispatch centers, obviously a lot of dispatch, so we've done over sixty of those, municipal courts, and we do a lot of shooting ranges, I know there's not a range in this current project, but we've, we've done a lot of those as well. So we have the municipal expertise, the knowledge trends, one of those is community engagement. So the first bullet under B, I know that was a question, so that is so important that we want the stakeholders, we want the board to have that voice and have that say in the design. So we take pride in doing that and finding the right times to do that. So, well before, you know, as I said, just briefly, we're going to have two weeks of program verification, eight weeks of schematic design. Usually by the end of schematic design, which will take us, you know, will be right in the beginning of the year, usually at the end of schematic design is the first time you publish that, that exterior vision, right? It's like, what is this going to look like on Main Street and Airline Road? And before that is published, we want to have an engaging visioning session. So basically what that means is with the client user group and also with you all, we will have some visioning sessions to see, well, what is the appropriate exterior presence and form and look and feel of this project in Victoria, this new municipal building? And we'll have examples to show you, we'll take obviously all of your consideration or comments, you know, does it want to look very traditional, does it want to look more progressive? So that's a really important time for you all to really weigh in on whatever's important to you. I mean, most councils really are maybe most concerned typically about the exterior presence, and then let's say maybe the courtroom or some of those most symbolic spaces. And wherever that concern and voice is, we'll want to make sure that we bring that information to you at that early stage, so we don't get to the end of construction documents and you're seeing it for the first time, we never want that to happen. So, we're going to find typically two, at least two opportunities, you're going to have that early visioning session at the end of schematic design or towards the end, so you're not surprised at all. And then typically, at the end of design development or right when that guaranteed maximum price is set, we're going to come back to you before that as well, because whatever price is set, you need to know what that's going to get you, right? So if you thought you were getting a hundred percent brick or stone building and then we go through this whole process and, and it changes, you really need to know what that change is, so we're going to make that happen. And then finally, sustainability and resiliency is our core things in health and wellness. So we want to make sure that those last three bullets are as much as the dollar can afford, they go into this important new building for your city. We want to make it resilient, you know, with the hurricanes, with the bad weather, we want to make sure that this building is a forty to fifty-year building and it is an important infrastructure facility. We want to make it as sustainable as it can. We don't care necessarily about the lead certificate and all that, but if the budget can afford a building that gives you really good energy performance and it's sustainable, we think we owe it to you to try and show you what your dollar can get there. And then the health and wellness, any building, to be honest, whether it's private or public, but importantly, municipal buildings, we want to make sure the building is a, is a healthy building, the staff that work there, whether it's the court staff, whether it's police officers, their jobs are stressful enough, and so we want to make sure that there's plenty of natural lighting, there's good air circulation and ventilation, and everything we can do with the interiors of that space to reduce stress, to provide really healthy environments, it's just really the way to go today, so. And then the last slide, just, this supports this, that our, our team and our firm, we've made a national commitment, and not to get into the details of what it is, but we're part of this national signatory twenty-thirty commitment, which basically says, we're going to promote with every client we can the most sustainable and, and healthy building that we can, and, and so we will definitely try to do that with you all. So with that, either between myself or City Manager Garza, we'd love to, I guess, open it up for any other questions.
Questions? We're excited to get you on board and get you started, and glad you're using some local talent as well, we have some great talent in this town and, and very proud to have them in Victoria. So, with that, are there any motions?
Motion, will you adopt item E3?
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, and motion carries, Mr. Garza, E4.
Item E4 is a resolution approving a five-year real estate lease and professional services agreement for Zoological Park Management with the South Texas Zoological Society Incorporated in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars per year.
All right, so a few slides, just to provide a little bit of history on how we got to today. Everybody's familiar with where this is located. Something interesting that I learned just in preparing for today's conversation is just a little bit of the history of the, of the zoo and how it began in nineteen fifty-seven, because someone donated a lion to the city, so the mayor at the time approached the Lions Club, because who else would you approach when you get donated a lion? And, you know, and, and what's interesting is that the fire marshal became the first zookeeper of this lion in nineteen fifty-seven, so somebody ought to get with our fire marshal and let him know he's going to get some duties as a sign. But, and it's, it's interesting how it began, in the early nineteen sixties, they officially named it the Victoria Children's Zoo, and originally the city actually formed a zoo commission in the early nineteen sixties to oversee the operation of the Victoria Children's Zoo. This was made up of several staff, including the city manager and mayor and a few others. And after a few years, is when I think, you know, everybody at the time got their heads together and realized, you know what, we need to create an entity that this becomes our subject matter expertise. And so nineteen sixty-six was the very first agreement between the city and the South Texas Zoological Society. This was a very long-term agreement for thirty years, the city retained ownership of the facility, the animals were owned by the Zoological Society per that agreement. It was after some investment, private dollars. It was after some investment, private dollars, fundraising, et cetera, and they made some improvements. It branded as the Texas Zoo beginning in June nineteen seventy-six. And shortly after, in nineteen eighty-six, which was only twenty years into a thirty-year agreement, that agreement was re-upped for another twenty years. And in essence, it led to, oh, I'm missing that. Oh, there it is. And in nineteen ninety-six began annual agreements. And so you can see that historically, these are long-term, you know, relationships with the Zoological Society and beginning in nineteen ninety-six began these annual agreements. We, the history in terms of the funding is a little bit hard to come by, but we do know that beginning with the annual agreements, it was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and it's fluctuated a couple of times here and there. But obviously, there's always been a funding relationship, you know, between the Zoological Society and the city. After Harvey, there were some lessons learned about that contractual relationship. And so in twenty eighteen, there were certain elements that were changed, such as, you know, animals, the ownership of the animals had gone back and forth throughout the years. You know, there was a fight over the animals. But anyway, long story short, there was just lessons learned then, and obviously, there's been some changes to just our vision for the zoo, our vision for its potential. And so we felt it was appropriate to take a fresh look at this relationship, at the agreement and at the funding associated with the zoo. And so what's before you is slightly different than what we've done since the late nineties in terms of bringing it to you annually. Where we are now is funding at a hundred and twenty-five thousand, which is all coming from the general fund. And as I mentioned, you could see how it fluctuated up to a hundred and fifty thousand away from the hundred and fifteen. And we actually dropped it to a hundred and twenty-five thousand shortly after Harvey. What we're proposing moving forward is actually a five-year agreement where we increase to two hundred thousand, where a hundred thousand comes from the general fund and is specifically utilized for maintenance of the facility and a hundred thousand dollars from hotel occupancy tax dollars to be used for some of the operational and promotional elements of the zoo. We think that this is a good way for us to ensure that the zoo has the funding to invest in the infrastructure that we own, because we still technically own the infrastructure within that property, and so we want to make sure that they have the funds to do that. One of the other things that we looked at was also the water allowances. We think the intent of the original agreements was to provide, in essence, free water to the zoo for their operation, so we changed some of the numbers that hadn't been updated since the sixties in terms of that allotment of water. Obviously, as our operation has increased, the water usage has as well, and so we adjusted that. Of course, the big focus was was the funding.
What was the raw water versus treated water?
Like, what's the difference?
Well, I mean, I know the difference, but is the raw what they did have, or is that what they?
No, they had both. Yeah, so they had both. And but what they were getting per contract was a lesser amount than what ended up being. So for example, the original contract had two hundred thousand gallons in raw water, we we upped it to two fifty. The original contract had two hundred and thirty-three thousand gallons, we upped it to three hundred. And we use some some historical data based off of usage to come up with the new figures, based off of what we all thought was the intent of that relationship.
Just curious, how do you deliver raw water? Just a pipe from the plant?
No, they got they got their own.
There's a well.
Yeah.
It's a well.
It's a well?
There's a well at the golf course. It's just pumped.
It's river water or is it well water?
It's well water.
River?
It's river water? No, it's well water.
Okay, so duties to the society are obviously to operate and maintain the zoo, provide and sponsor educational programs, encourage wildlife conservation and promote tourism, and of course, pursue additional fundraising for their improvements that that they seek. I already mentioned us approaching it as a five-year agreement to get away from the annual agreements. One of the new things in the agreement is that this agreement allows us the ability to appoint two representatives of the city. I get to appoint them as city manager, and this way, we have some seat at the table and discussions and conversations around just the operation. Obviously, it's in our park, we're part owners of the zoo, and we contribute financially, so we thought it was appropriate for us to have a formal seat at the table on their board of directors. The original agreement had some verbiage about them making some formal presentations to council and city manager, it was kind of stuff that really was never followed, and we took that out simply because obviously, through our two representatives, that's how we'll be in the loop of what's going on.
How many people are on the board?
How many people are on the board?
How many?
Seven.
Seven. Thank you.
They're looking for more. Hands-on volunteers. Next step, so if approved, we'll proceed with the two appointments, which will be Jason, our Parks Director, and Michelle Myers, our Sports Tourism Manager. The idea behind this is to bring an operational perspective to the conversation as well as a marketing tourism-related mindset to the conversation. And so they'll be our two formal appointees on that board. One of the things that's also in the pipeline is finalizing an agreement with the Zoological Society for half a million dollars that they requested through the ARPA funds process that council supported. It was always our intent to sequentially, you know, make this annual change first before coming forward with the ARPA funds. And as a reminder, that half a million will, there'll be some funds there for zoo master plan. We think it's time for our zoo to go through a master plan and figure out, you know, what those growth strategies are for them, as well as invest some dollars in some exhibits and other infrastructure improvements. So that's coming.
Do not done a master plan?
So great question. We were able to find that they went through a version of a master plan in the early two thousands that the city actually helped fund at the time. But that was the closest that that they went. From my conversations with them, it was not an experienced zoo master planner that handled that process. And so we envision this go-around being a firm that specializes in zoo master plans, as well as just having a more community-involved process, right? Think our master plans and surveys and public meetings and whatnot that we go through. That master plan in the early two thousands didn't, wasn't a robust process like that.
And then, how do we address their lack of focus on fundraising?
That, I think that's part of our role on the board, is to go about approaching that and bringing those concerns to light. I think one of the things that any nonprofit, I think, deals with is just what's the vision, right? And what's sort of the capital campaign strategy? And so my vision is that going through the zoo master plan will hopefully hopefully yield sort of that capital campaign, right, that could help facilitate fundraising. I think right now, one of the challenges is been their day-to-day. And so part of our increased allocation is to try and improve the day-to-day operations so that they can actually focus on making some improvements and fundraising efforts that are tangible and can be seen by the by the folks that donate and contribute to the zoo. And so I think it's just a change and just perspective on it. I mean, those are conversations that we're already having with their leadership and with the board.
Yeah, because some of the past comments from them were that they were just holding events to raise awareness of the zoo. But there's nothing, I mean, those people aren't likely to come back soon if they're at a fundraising event at the zoo.
Well, we hope they do.
But.
Yeah.
That's what they thought, that's their thinking, is that, oh, it's just going to bring them back more.
Sure.
I don't, why go through all that effort if you're not going to try and raise money during an event?
Go for it. Allison is on the board as a private citizen.
Yeah, so Christie Yoker and I are also on the board as, not his appointees, but just as private people. And I can, I can tell you that there's a lot of new people on the board within the last several months. And so with the the new board members and kind of coming together with a newer vision for the direction of the library and the master plan that we are going to have to obviously put into place, I think that's going to create a more cohesive idea of what the zoo needs to look like, fundraising included, so that it's not just a one-to-one-to-get-to-the-next-thing kind of plan, but we'll have something in place that gives us the goals that's never been done before. And there's been, I know that leadership-wise within the zoo staff, there's been some issues that we're, as a as a board, working on getting solid and getting the right people in all the right places. And so those are all things that are going to take a minute to get organized and get put together, but I think once we do, we'll have a very, I know that Christie and I have a very solid vision of where this should go, and we have some great new board members that are going to help everybody get there. So I think you're going to see some big changes, maybe not immediately, but within the next couple of years, especially at the zoo.
Okay, I want to address the, this picture it has on there, finalizing the ARPA funds for five hundred thousand dollars. So we're still thinking about investing five hundred thousand dollars in the zoo?
Yeah, that was the last sign-off direction council gave, yeah.
And the leases for two hundred thousand that we're, they're going to pay us?
No, we're paying them.
Oh, we're paying them, so it's in addition to the ARPA funds?
Correct. Unassociated, yeah.
Okay, I understand.
And of the five hundred thousand, it looks like it's for two different things. How much of that is allocated for master plan and how much for improvements?
Currently, a hundred thousand dollars is set aside for the master plan out of that half a million. And the remaining four hundred thousand is for exhibit improvements and infrastructure improvements. They've, the board has signed off on what those improvements ought to be. It's somewhat changed from their original submission, you know, over a year ago, simply because some of those improvements they've already made. And so ultimately, that information will be included in that ARPA agreement in terms of what the money would be spent on.
Has has there been some hardening since Hurricane Harvey, or is that something that is being looked at here? I'm just not familiar with, you know, what's been done and what might need to be done.
I'm not super familiar with what has been done since Harvey, but I can get that information for you. But I do know that mitigation and that sort of stuff is part of what is included in the basically list of projects that the zoo is providing to us for the ARPA money, so that we can be sure that that sort of thing is included in there, as opposed to, we want them to fix the, you know, the structures and all of that, we also want them to harden the the whole facility, so that's in there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think we did, there was something with the roofs that we helped out with.
Yep.
After Harvey.
Yeah, those facilities are insured by our carrier.
Right. Is there anything further?
I'd just like to comment that I've loved the, loved the pictures in the presentation, so thank you for going slow enough.
Yeah, Keisha assured me that we have all of these animals in our zoo.
Good eyes.
So I hope that it's true.
All right. Thank you.
I move that we adopt E four.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item E five.
Item E five is a resolution approving amendments to the bylaws of the city of city of Victoria's Tourism Advisory Board.
All right. Thank you for your time this evening, Mayor and Council. I am just back here to provide a brief presentation and for your all approval to make some changes to our Tourism Advisory Board. Just a quick overview for who currently serves on our board right now. We have nine active members, three for lodging, including James Weirden of the Inn on Main, Brenda Guajardo of the Sales, Director of Sales at Courtyard Marriott, Raj Panchal of Comfort Inn and Suites, Brenda Tally of the Victoria Ballet Theater for Arts, Sue Prudhomme for Victoria College, Jay Lambert for UHV, Jeff Wright from the Victoria Preservation, Rosanna Frisch from the Victoria Mall, and Ashley McGee for Sports and Outdoor Tourism, the owner-operator of Flo Paddle Co. We currently have four vacant positions. We are accepting applications for those right now until November eleventh, and I can say, just for the public, we are accepting applications if you fit into one of those categories, and we are seeing some really solid applications. So I think it'll be a tough decision here in a couple of weeks for some of those open spots on the board. And I am kind of doing a joint presentation right now for the two items that I have listed, including the bylaw changes and the resolution for extending the terms.
Still just fifteen minutes.
Just a, just another approach that, you know, came here a few weeks back, and we talked about some bylaw changes, council decided to table that for a different approach. I met with our city secretary, April Hillbrick, and talked with our legal team, and I think we've come to a little bit simpler of a solution. The desire for this was to somehow effectively stagger the terms of our board members so they're not all ending on the same year. So we actually approached it by not making any bylaw changes in terms of our board terms, but simply extending via resolution the terms of certain board members. And I'd like to prefix this with by saying that all of all of these changes have been approved by our board at an August meeting. So we would, via resolution tonight, extend the terms of certain positions on the board, and this would effectively stagger them. So we'd have a number, about half of the board ending in an odd year, their terms ending in an odd year, and then about another half of the board ending in an even year. Those ones that would be extended tonight, if approved, would be our lodging positions. I think we, you know, can all agree that those are some of the most important positions on our boards. The arts positions, that is one that's always a lot of, attracts a lot of attention, great applications, is very important. And then historic preservation and promotion positions to our board. Our bylaw changes, that is actually the first resolution up, just some minor changes to that. As I mentioned, we won't be making any changes, as I suggested the last meeting I was at, for the board terms for board members, but just some minor grammatical changes in reference to officers. Extending the terms for our current board officers from, to make it a term of two years, and officers may not conserve more than two consecutive terms. In some changes in relation to quorum, there was just some conflicting language in those bylaws that, at the advice of our city secretary, we took a couple of sentences out just to to simplify it. And then Section five point one, formation of subcommittees. Right now, there's nothing in there that says how subcommittees are formed. We've gone by Robert rules that say the board chair, it's implied that the board chair appoints subcommittee members, but this is just clarifying that a little bit.
Can you go backwards one slide, please?
Yes, sir.
One more. So right here, you have board members conserve a maximum of three consecutive terms.
Yes, sir.
That's current?
Yes, sir.
And so we're just going to reduce it to two?
They can serve a max, no, they will be, they can serve a maximum of three consecutive terms, they're two-year terms. We're extending the current terms for a couple.
What are your bylaws? You've changed that.
No, not, we're not changing that tonight. That's officers versus members. So chair, vice chair, secretary.
It's kind of odd, I didn't really understand why, but I figured there had to be a reason.
I apologize for that confusion, yeah, that's general members versus officers.
Okay.
And this is what we'd be doing tonight, is extending the terms for our officers. And those are currently Sue Prudhomme with the Victoria College is our board chair, Brenda Tally is our vice chair, and Ashley McGee is our Sports and Outdoor Tourism of Flo Paddle Co. They all do a wonderful job. And our subcommittee, the only current subcommittee we have is the Hot Funds Awards Subcommittee. All of those meetings are open to the public, and at this time, we don't see, foresee the formation of any other subcommittees, but that might happen in the future.
Okay, you're extending the terms of the officers? Or extending their terms as board members?
Right, just their terms of officers. Right now, the bylaws as they state only say like one-year terms, it's not very clear.
I see.
So we wanted to give them a little more time, they've been doing a fantastic job. It's, it wasn't very clear when we set it up how many terms the board officers could serve. So we extended their terms and and did put a cap in there on how many terms they could serve. It just wasn't very clear when we start, when we formed the Tourism Advisory Board.
So they're, they're in a term right now that we would consider one of their two-year terms.
Continuing, yes, yes.
And then they can serve for another two-year term.
Yes.
When does their first two-year term end?
Well, right now, they they were elected in summer of twenty twenty-one. Now, if you look at the bylaws again, it wasn't very well-formed, we were learned along the way. Is that summer twenty twenty-one, so, but the bylaws state that they are elected in the first meeting of the year. So what we were going to do is carry their terms until twenty, beginning of twenty twenty-three, they can be revoted in as officers, serve another two years. At the end of that, we would elect a new crop of officers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Edit?
And that's, and that's it. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Novasad.
Want to make it the fifth and the sixth consecutively, or do you want to vote on it separate?
You can do them together.
Okay, I move that we adopt.
Let her read E six first.
Item E six is a resolution approving the extension of the current terms of board members of the city of Victoria's Tourism Advisory Board.
I move that we adopt E five and E six together. A second.
And a motion and a second to approve items E five and E six. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On to city manager reports.
All right, we have two tonight. Um, Daryl is gonna spearhead the first one. He's gonna take a total of sixty seconds, I think. Is that a challenge? You know how I am with challenges. Okay, ninety seconds. Ninety seconds, okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight, I'm gonna talk about a couple of rate increases. Actually, I'm gonna touch on all three real quickly. Um, for all of our, uh, for our, uh, commercial, our landfill and our compost facility. Um, they're all driven, uh, all of our rates are driven by CPI. We use the same language for the most part. It's not all identical. Some have fuel, some do not, some have gas, some have diesel, so they all differ in a little different way. And I'm just gonna kinda go through that real quickly tonight, just so that the public understands kinda how these things go. So we have an increase coming, uh, for the city rate at Republic. Um, and Republic is one of those contracts, if you'll remember, I was here just a few months ago talking about Ashbrit, our, our, uh, debris management contractor. Well, Republic actually could have asked for an eleven-plus percent rate increase. However, we have a limit in Republic's contract that says they can only increase up to eight percent in any two consecutive years. So that means four percent a year, five and three. And so after discussions with Republic, they decided to go up four percent this year and withhold the other four for next year. Um, and so the new rate for Republic will go from thirty-one twenty to thirty-three seventeen. This does not need council approval as part of the contract, um, and this is for city rate only. The outside rate also goes up four percent. Our sludge will go up from ten forty-seven a ton to eleven thirteen a ton. If we take our sludge there, remember, we take our sludge to the compost facility to create compost. Moving on to Gardenville, again, we're looking at a thirteen point nine seven percent increase. This is based off CPI, however, they use gasoline, not diesel. Um, it's a very different process, using different equipment than what's used at the landfill or what waste management uses on a daily basis. And so we will see an increase there from forty-four seventy-nine per ton to fifty-one oh five per ton. Are you with me so far? Okay, and then I wanna touch real briefly on waste management. It was approved earlier, but I just wanted to touch base because it is a little different as well. So you see the all items at seven point six. Waste management is diesel, not gasoline, which is what, uh, Gardenville was. So that rate is a little bit different, which brings it up to sixteen point six percent and an increase of, uh, or an increase of sixteen point six percent. So a six yarder essentially would go from one thirty-one sixteen to one forty-six fourteen, an increase of fourteen ninety-eight. Now, these are the highest increases we, in my thirty-five years of doing this, I've ever seen. And so our hope is that as things hopefully normalize, as we've talked about through the budget process with our disposal and our tonnages and all that stuff. The thing to remember about CPIs is they go up, they go down. On average, it's usually three to four percent, at the most up, one, two percent down. Our hope is that we see these go down over the next couple of years as things normalize. How much? I don't know. How soon? I don't know. But they do go up, they do go down. If, if they come in next year and they're lower, the price will decrease. Um, all of our contracts pretty much have the same language, using the same months. Um, and this is something the city puts in. So regardless of the contractor, these are the types of things we will see on the solid waste side. And I'll answer any questions. I wish you had better news.
Thank you for.
You gave us hope that it's gonna decrease next year, but we won't hold you to it.
Thanks for getting the limits.
Yeah, please don't, but there's that possibility.
Thanks for getting the limits that you got.
All right.
All right. So our second item, um, I wanna ask Michelle Myers to come up and provide you an update on sports tourism as well as introduce you, um, to some folks who'll spearhead a facility study for us.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. Thank you for your time tonight. I just wanted to come in and give you an update on what's going on in the game of sports tourism. And I know the mayor has us on a timer, so I'm gonna talk fast. Here's what's been going on. Uh, we have implemented a few little changes. Like I said, we're trying to still pioneer this industry for Victoria, see what that looks like. And of course, we've had branding, which you all had, uh, swag packs in your chairs when you got in this, this evening. Those are what all we've come up with with our new sports tourism logo. Uh, we're working on doing the facilities assessment, which Joe's gonna speak on that here in just a bit. We've had our first annual Riverside Row, trying to utilize other areas of Victoria other than just your conventional sports, trying to open that up to, you know, other interests and other markets that we can capitalize on. Uh, I've been out networking, I've been to National ETA Summit. We've done a lot of things to meet industry partners, such as the one that you'll meet tonight. I met him through one of those networking opportunities, and, and I'm grateful that we were able to do that. We've had multiple softball tournaments coming in, as well as our regional TAF and, and our TAF activities that V I S D has done historically. So that's kind of an overview of sports for what's gone on in twenty twenty-two and what's on the calendar through the remainder of the year. And as far as what's coming up, this weekend, we are actually hosting the Pump Pass and Kick. Uh, I'm not sure what you call it. It's not a tournament. And what we're going to do is we will be the first city in Texas to actually host the first adaptive pump pass and kick this Saturday. So that'll be out at the Dream Complex across from the Parks Office. If you guys are out and about and you wanna stop in between nine and twelve and kinda check that out and see, it's, it, we're pioneering that and we're setting those, you know, it was kinda like, what does that look like? How do we do that? And now we will be that resource for other cities in Texas that, that wanna do that. S T P G A will be here next weekend at the Country Club. Our TAF games or the Winter Games of Texas that, that we host through TAF have upped from eight games of twenty twenty-two to we will have twelve games, uh, this coming year for twenty-three. Two of those will be sanctioned games, so we're hoping that will draw in more crowds that follow those organizations. Uh, we were also gonna host a U S T A sanctioned adaptive tennis tournament. We've talked with V C and, uh, or with Victoria Country Club, and that partnership has been established, and they are willing to, to help us out with that as well. And that's another thing, meeting with those stakeholders each quarter and just kinda touching base and letting them know, here's what we're doing, what do you have going on, what can we help you with, that type of thing. And keeping those networks and partnerships in good working order. Uh, we've brought Victoria College in for Winter Games this year. We'll be using one of their facilities. We've brought Victoria Country Club in to actually host tennis for January and March for TAF games as well. So we're grateful for those partnerships. And then, of course, we have, uh, A J G A coming up in April. That will be a big deal out at Riverside. You've got a list there in front of you of other efforts. Those are just other conversations that are happening, things that are in the works, proposals that are going out. Um, just again, to kinda break some of that conventionalism of sports and, and grab some of those other interests that have other followings. Here's kind of our main three. My goal is to have at least one major sports tourism event per month here in the city. So this kind of carries us through the first quarter. We've got TAF, as you can see, it's spread out just mainly because of scheduling. One of those TAF games, we do Cornhole. They will actually host a three-day superregional tournament here, um, at the community center. So that will bring in those tourism dollars that we're looking for. And then, of course, again, A J G A in April. So if you don't have any questions on that, or if you do, but I've got Joe Fackel from the Sports Facilities Company here with us. Again, like I said, met him through one of the national summits that I got to go to. James, I'm gonna have to break something for you tonight. And he's got a presentation together. We've, you know, in the master plan, it was identified that facilities were going to need an assessment. We found someone that we think can do that for us, and I'd like you to hear from him.
Thank you, Michelle. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. My name's Joe Fackel. I'm with the Sports Facilities Companies. And, uh, came from Fort Worth to be with you all this evening. I met Michelle, as she said, at a, uh, sports industry conference up in Fort Worth a couple of months ago. Made a visit down to Victoria in June and was really blown away by your community. I've, I've had the good fortune of traveling a great deal in my career, and it's really rare that I go to a community and I'm, I go, holy cow, like, I had no idea Victoria had a Riverside Park and all these great facilities. And I think you're smart to put sports tourism in your twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan, because it's a fifty billion dollar industry and it's growing like crazy. So our firm works, um, with cities to plan, develop, and operate sports, recreation, wellness event, and entertainment facilities. And I've got a brief presentation, uh, Mayor. I think you'll appreciate this. I was once given these words of advice before presenting to city council. Be brief, be brilliant, and be gone. And so it is with that. It's in that spirit that I'm here tonight. But our agenda, we're gonna talk about our background. Uh, we, we actually do a lot of work with Half Associates, um, that Victoria knows well. They did your Parks Master Plan. They're a good partner of ours. We're gonna talk about what we have been tasked to do through our conversations with Jason and Michelle and Kimberly here in Victoria, timelines of what that looks like, and then, uh, leave some time for questions and answers. We've got a mission that really makes me proud. This is why we get up in the morning. It's to improve the health and economic vitality of the communities we serve through sport, recreation, wellness event, and entertainment facilities. And on the bottom of this slide, you can see just a handful of the communities we've served. We've worked nationally and internationally. We've been around since two thousand and three. Um, served almost three thousand communities now, and it seems like we're in the midst of a real arms race as it relates to youth and amateur sports facilities. Um, you probably have residents that ask you, uh, why do I have to go to Houston to play hockey? Or I'm tired of going to San Antonio for tennis tournaments and things like that. And so fundamentally, what we're trying to help you guys understand is what isn't here that could be and should be? What kinds of improvements can you make to your existing, um, sports assets to drive more people into Victoria so that they can spend more time at your zoo and go to the pump house and eat at your restaurants and stay at your hotels and things of that nature? Drives really a significant amount of economic impact, and we are a, a really well-known commodity in this space. We've, like I said, we've been around eighteen years, uh, have worked with a lot of communities and answered questions like this. So we have a roadmap here. Um, this just, I wanna give you an idea of kinda how we serve clients. Um, we call this from concept to concrete. We get forty calls a week from people who are trying to figure out if there's an opportunity for their community to develop some sort of sports or recreation asset. Um, early stage, back at napkin, here's what we're thinking. We have no idea if we can support that or what it's gonna cost or how we're gonna operate it. So we do a lot of that kind of pre-development advisory work that's, uh, stage one, two, and three. Once a project has been greenlit, we know how it's gonna be, uh, financed. We are actually functioning as an owner's rep on, I think, twelve projects around the country right now on behalf of municipalities, uh, where we're delivering a complete product. Um, most cities aren't in the sports, um, facility development game. It's a different animal. Um, and we've gotten pretty good at it. We've got a really deep team. And, um, and we're doing a lot of that kinda work. It's important work. You gotta design it right so that it can be operated at an optimal level, and so we know how these facilities operate, because if you move to the seven, eight, nine, we actually operate a network of forty primarily public-owned facilities around the country. Here's a map. Maybe some of you have been to some of our facilities. Um, by the way, we have fifteen hundred team members out in the field. We're headquartered in Clearwater, Florida. Um, we hosted twenty-five million visitors in twenty twenty-two through the facilities that we operate. This is not anything that we're talking about with Victoria, but just wanna give you an idea of the, kinda the depth of our, of our work in this space. We operate these four facilities here in Texas, the Legends Event Center, which is under construction up in Bryan, the Epicenter, which is a project that recently, um, got the go-ahead in Fort Bend County, Cyclone Ballparks out in Pecos, and we operate all of the on-campus athletic facilities for the University of Texas Permian Basin out in Odessa. So a really wide variety of, of, um, of, uh, of facilities, uh, that we operate. You guys know Half. They're a leader in landscape architecture and engineering. Uh, they've done work here in Victoria, and they are second to none when it comes to visualizing what's possible. Right? So essentially, what we've outlined in our proposal is to answer those questions. Talk to us about your existing assets. Uh, what improvements might you make in order to drive more events into Victoria? What do you not have that you should or could? I'm sure you're getting asked about pickleball all the time, like every other elected official in America. It seems to be top of mind with every resident in every city of all shapes and sizes. So we have a methodology that we, uh, employ in order to answer those questions. It starts with a project kickoff call. Uh, the project will be led by one of our principals, Evan Elef, and one of our, um, account executives. Um, we'll do an existing data review. We'll do a high-level market analysis. We wanna figure out what, what are the demographic? What are the psychographic characteristics? What are the sports participation rates? Who are the existing providers of those, of those, um, activities here in Victoria? Everything there is to know about what's happening, and I think Michelle and, and Jason and Kimberly will certainly be great resources as we do that work. And then we're gonna bring a team here to Victoria to do a site tour. And we've identified a handful of facilities that are what I would call priority, the adult, um, sports complex, the youth sports complex, the community center, and then the various assets down at Riverside Park, including, uh, the stadium, the soccer complex, and the golf, um, clubhouse and range. We'll then come back with, um, an analysis, recommendations, opinions of cost, um, and then package that all up in a market feasibility report. It'll have all of that information there readily available. Ultimately, we want you to be in a position to make really good decisions on behalf of the, of the City of Victoria. And then if you so choose, Half can do a follow-on, um, set of, um, services, including test fits and, you know, three D renderings and two D renderings and site plans and all that kinda stuff that they're so good at. So the timeline on this, a typical project like this, um, is twelve to sixteen weeks, broken down in these buckets. We'd like to get the project started immediately, a week after contract execution. First, um, thing, existing data review and market analysis, about three weeks. We'll be onsite for two days. We'll take then four weeks to do the existing facility analysis and opinion of cost. New facility recommendations will take three weeks, and then the market feasibility, um, will take four weeks. So that's the timeline. Um, I've gone very quickly, uh, in the interest of time, but I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all might have as it relates to what I've covered.
What's the possibility of, uh, building an indoor soccer building? Cause we used to have to go to Houston when the kids were playing soccer, and I know we have a lot of soccer fans here.
I, I don't mean to sound, uh, coy or smart, but, um, it, it's just a matter of how much money you wanna spend, to be quite honest. I mean, that's what it's gonna take. It's gonna take, first of all, obviously, you have to have enough players to support it. And just so y'all kind of understand that, that when you say sports tourism, we're talking typically about a four to six hour drive time. And if you think about your location and how many people you can tap into, probably the hottest youth sports markets, Houston, Dallas, Fort Worth, um, Austin, San Antonio, so we could absolutely look at an indoor. That's not something that we've scoped, but we have, we do, you know, we'll do a hundred and twenty feasibility projects this year, and many of them are answering that same question about indoor or ice or aquatics or whatever it is.
When we're looking at city facilities, can you also take into consideration the agreements we have, like with the Y M C A for our city pool? I don't know if they explain that to you, but I'm sure staff can on how that works.
A- absolutely. Um, those are important stakeholders that we need to know and we need to have conversations with, absolutely. We work with not only Y M Cs, but other user groups, you know, the, the club organizers, Little League, you know, whatever it is, absolutely.
Yeah, it's kind of a joint use agreement on the pool, so.
Yep.
Will you be considering, so there's the City of Victoria, which is this entity that we are the council of, but there's also a community of Victoria. Um, is your focus city and city projects, or is it community?
Uh, it's a great question. We are focused on the best ways to drive economic impact through people coming into Victoria for events, tournaments, camps, clinics, showcases. Now, if we do that, and if you've got a portfolio of assets, those will absolutely serve Victoria and the Victoria community Monday through Friday of the week. We are very, very in tune with the importance of local use. And so most of the facilities that we're involved with, the idea is you build it to serve your locals during the week, and then on the weekend, you get people to come to town, hotel occupancy tax, pay for your zoo, pay for your roads, do all that kinda good stuff that they do. And this, again, this is a, it's a fifty billion dollar industry, and it's not getting smaller. So it's a great opportunity.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, um, that's it for the city manager reports. We will have an executive session this evening. So, uh, it's what, five, six twenty-six? Oh, he took my clock away up there. Six twenty-six, and at this time, we will recess for an executive session. Six twenty-six, and at this time, we will recess for an executive session, but also take a ten-minute break in between.
The City Council recessed for executive session on the eighteenth day of October twenty twenty-two at six twenty-six P M. Subject matter of the executive session is as follows. Executive session in accordance with Texas Government Code five five one point zero eight seven, five five one point zero seven two, and five five one point zero seven one.